Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the May 2nd, 2023 Planning Commission Work Session. Ms. Adamois?
Good afternoon. We have three interesting cases today. The first case is UP 2307. We have a discussion because the city engineer is supposed to come, and we were deciding if we would flip the cases, just in case he came in early.
Okay.
But we'll just go in the order that we have. The first case hopefully won't, you know, be that extensive. So the staff coordinator is Amy Murvine.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. I am Amy Murvine. Oh, sorry. Thank you, though. I am Amy Murvine, Senior Planner with the City of Portsmouth. This use permit application request before you today is to construct four townhouses on the approximately 0.231 combined acres located at 3002 and 3006 Deep Creek Boulevard. The properties are located in the general mixed-use GMU zoning district. The properties... Oh, next slide. The properties are currently vacant of structures. The surrounding area consists of residential and industrial-type uses. To the north of the subject properties is vacant land, followed by detached, single-family dwellings, zoned multifamily urban residential URM. To the west is a railroad, followed by Frederick Boulevard. To the east is Graham Street, followed by Lexington Park Apartments, zoned URM. To the south is Deep Creek Boulevard, followed by a paved parking lot and a warehouse office space, zoned light industrial IL. The applicant's proposal is to construct four townhouses on the properties at 3002 and 3006 Deep Creek Boulevard. Each proposed townhouse unit will be three stories, with the required two off-street parking spaces, one of which is located within a one-car garage. The proposed building materials include horizontal and vertical board and batten siding, vinyl-clad windows, pressure-treated solid columns wrapped in fiberglass, and architectural asphalt shingles. The following slides show the elevations. This one shows the south and west elevations. And the second slide shows the north and east elevations. Proposed conditions of the use permit request is proposed... Is no proposed abutting townhouses shall be constructed exactly the same, and no trash cans shall be stored in the front or side yards. The approximate size of the units will be 2,612 square feet, including the garage, with four bedrooms and four and a half bathrooms per unit. The conceptual plans also include a covered front porch and second-floor deck at the rear of the property. The property is designated on the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan for Multifamily Residential Development. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's use permit request with the recommended conditions. With the conditions, the proposed use is consistent with the recommendations of the city's comprehensive plan and is compatible with the surrounding area. To my knowledge, no public comments have been received regarding this application. I will now stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Murvine. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Jiggett, go ahead.
The... It's still the same button down here. Hi.
Hi.
You referred to, when you're describing the site, you was... You referred to the railroad. Should it be the railroad or the railroad tracks? Isn't it the railroad tracks and not the railroad? There should be the proper description. Does anyone know the answer?
It's understood that it's railroad tracks.
We can never assume. That's why I'm asking the question. Is it supposed to be the railroad or the railroad tracks? That's my question.
The railroad tracks.
Railroad tracks. Well, I would ask that we make that correction, because when I think of railroad, I don't think of... I think of railroad as a railroad, and I think of railroad tracks as something different. That's just my call.
So it's a railroad property, because there's more than tracks there. There's other...
Okay.
There's other property that they own that is the right-of-way. So it's the railroad property that is behind there, that includes the railroad tracks, but also includes buffer areas and such.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners... Commissioner Page?
I guess in line with Commissioner Jiggett's question, and I did ask you this earlier. I guess my concern was there any sort of regulation or rules about having that home so close to the railroad tracks that would maybe warrant us to add some sort of buffer fence, shrubbery, something because of recent events where railroads have had incidents near homes? Is there something that we can put in place? Also, from what I understand, that this is a multifamily complex or units, which means that there's potential that children may be in them. So something that would create a barrier. And I know you said, "Ask the applicant," which we will indeed do. But is there anything written that in this particular case, there's some sort of shrubbery or something that would go up? No?
And if you look at the map that she's got up right there, there's actually a large paper street that's behind there that actually buffers the property in between the townhouses and the railroad property, which is where the lines are there. There's actually some distance there.
When you say paper street, what do you... Help me understand.
Amy, can you point behind the GMU property there, that vacant space?
Okay.
Is a paper street? It's an unimproved right-of-way? And then where the black lines are, where it's white, that's the actual rail property?
Okay.
So there is some distance. There are setbacks for, you know, rear setbacks for any parcel. And there are, you know, worth noting, as Amy said, there's already existing single-family houses in those URM properties there. But I don't believe that we have any authority to require anything additional.
But we can ask?
Sure.
We can ask? Okay.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Ms. Murvine, I have one. It says that there's... Under condition number seven, no trash cans can be stored out front. If these are going to be townhouses, is there going to be a rear path? Or is... Are the lots going to be fenced in separately? Are they going to remain open?
That would be a question for the applicant. At this time, their application did not include a fence or concrete pad at the backside, just that there was a one-car garage at the front.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions?
Yes, I have one. And I'm going to address it to interim planning director. Were we able to get any additional information about getting input from the school system whenever we have residential-type constructions coming before us?
I did receive a request, and I did send a request to the deputy... I did send a request to the deputy city managers seeking their assistance in getting the school system to respond to our requests. And that's the best I could do. I've sent emails to Mr. Bracy. We sent emails to the school email site. And so the next step was to... I contacted deputy city manager and the city manager accident to help us to get their information. And that's the best I can do.
Okay. I want to make sure I'm clearly understanding you. So I think what you're saying to me is you did reach out, and none of the particular departments responded to you... to the request for the additional...
Your question was specifically for the school system.
Right.
And the email I sent, uh, sent to the deputy city managers, addressed the school system. It was just yesterday. So I haven't had a response from them, based on my email that was sent yesterday.
Not even a response from... I think you said that the school system, they have their own planning director. Is that correct?
They have a... I think the superintendent, Mr. Bracy.
No, the... I thought you said it was a deputy person. Or were you pertaining to Superintendent Bracy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. He's normally pretty good at responding. Please still follow through.
I will.
Follow up. Thank you.
No problem.
Commissioner Hines?
Thank you. And in similar comment to Mrs. Jiggett's, I wanted to thank you all again for kind of just summarizing your work that you... and putting it into the staff report and showing the outreach that you've had to a number of different departments. So I wanted... I just wanted to thank you for that. About the unimproved street, it doesn't really clearly show on Google Maps. Is that kind of just like... Is it kind of overgrown at this point? That it's just not been cared for by the railroad, so it doesn't show up very well on the satellite image kind of thing? Is that what's happened there? Okay. I just want to get clarity on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners... Commissioners...
I'm sorry. I'm confused. What was the answer to Commissioner Hines' question about the railroad and the maintenance of that paper street? I think is what you're referring to.
Oh, yeah. It's an unimproved street, and there's a lot of vegetation growing there.
Who's responsible for maintaining it?
So it is considered public right-of-way because it's still open. So it would be the city.
City of Portsmouth and not the railroad system?
In general, the abutting property owners are responsible for maintaining those properties. The abutting property owners.
In this case, who are we referring to?
All of those abutting property owners would in... You know, if they were going to cite anybody. But in general, those areas are typically not maintained, because they're unimproved, as Amy said.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Murvine.
Our next case is UP 2308 Hampton Roads Crossing. Staff coordinator, Julie Chopp.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. I'm Julie Chopp, Principal Planner with the City of Portsmouth. This use permit application involves a 7.34-acre undeveloped parcel located at 1050 University Boulevard. The property is within the southeast portion of Hampton Roads Crossing, or HRC, which is a mixed-use master planned development in northern Suffolk and western Portsmouth. The property at 1050 University Boulevard is zoned conditional general mixed-use, or GMUK, and is designated on the future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Plan as for commercial use. The site is encumbered with several utilities and associated easements, including a Dominion Power Transmission Easement, a city water main, and a Commonwealth Gas Transmission Pipe. A sound wall protecting the nearby residents from the associated noise of the western freeway is located along a portion of the eastern parcel line. And an eight-foot wooden fence borders the residential properties to the north and east. A stormwater BMP surrounded by vegetation exists in the western edge of the parcel. The properties at 1040, 1070, and the subject property at 1050 University Boulevard were previously one larger parcel that was subdivided in 2006. This approximately 16.26 acre area within Hampton Roads Crossing has a long history of rezoning requests, the last of which was in 1990, when city council approved rezoning application Z-90-02, which rezoned the property to general commercial C-2K with proffered conditions. The C-2 zoning district is now the general mixed-use, or GMU, zoning district. The subject property is bounded to the south by the western freeway, or Virginia Route 164. Located west of the site is a three-story medical office building and a two-story university educational facility. Both of the adjoining properties to the west are zoned conditional general mixed-use and are part of the HRC mixed-use development. North of 1050 University Boulevard are two-story, single-family detached dwellings, zoned general residential, or GR, within the Armistead Forest neighborhood. Bordering the subject property to the east is the single-family residential development of Churchland West, which is also zoned GR. The proffered conditions of the Z-90-02 rezoning include measures intended to protect the adjacent single-family dwellings to the north and east. Development of the property at 1050 University Boulevard is subject to these proffered conditions. Vehicular access from Tallwood Drive is prohibited to prevent accessing the site from the abutting residential neighborhoods. A seven-foot solid fence was required to be installed along the northern and eastern property lines. A plan for vegetative screening along the entire perimeter of the fence on the adjoining residentially-zoned properties was required to be provided for approval by the planning department and installed upon request by any adjoining property owner. Within 100 feet of residentially-zoned properties, uses must be permitted in the GMU zoning district. Buildings must be a maximum height of 25 feet, and lighting is to be directed away from the single-family dwellings. No loading areas, principal and accessory dwellings, or trash receptacles are permitted within 50 feet of any residentially-zoned property. Lastly, a 15-foot setback is required between any parking and the northern and eastern property lines. The Hampton Roads Crossing Master Plan originally designated 1050 University Boulevard for a large three-to-four-story suburban office development with 350 off-street parking spaces, similar to the office buildings developed on the two adjacent parcels. According to the applicant, the subject parcel was marketed for almost two decades and was unsuccessful in finding office use tenants. The applicant is currently proposing to pivot from the originally planned office uses to warehousing, light manufacturing, and flex-based uses. The applicant does not yet have tenants for the proposal, stating that potential tenants could include a mechanical contractor that installs ductwork, a lawn service company, a wholesale auto parts facility, and other uses for which a standard warehouse structure has too large of a footprint. Except for the warehouse and light manufacturing uses, the tentatively proposed uses do not require an approved use permit and could be established on the property by right. The proposal includes the construction of five warehouse buildings totaling 61,200 square feet and a maximum height of 30 feet. The two buildings located within 100 feet of the residentially-zoned property are approximately 24 feet 8 inches, which is in compliance with the height restriction mandated in the proffered conditions. One standalone 13,200-square-foot building is proposed. The other four buildings are 12,000 square feet each and are proposed as two buildings sharing a common loading dock and covered platform. Each building includes an outdoor gravel storage area, surrounded by an eight-foot chain link fence. And it should be noted that outdoor storage as an accessory use is permitted by right in the GMU zoning district. 123 off-street parking spaces, including six ADA accessible spaces, are proposed. Access to the site is proposed from University Boulevard and the City of Suffolk, and two private access easements through the property at 1040 University Boulevard, one of which is existing and the other proposed. The yellow is the proposed access easement, and the red line is the existing access easement. An addendum to the 2011 Traffic Impact Analysis for Hampton Roads Crossing was submitted with this use permit application. The TIA addendum assesses the potential traffic impact between the current proposal and the original commercial and office development plan. The addendum concluded that the proposed warehouse development would not adversely impact the road network surrounding Hampton Roads Crossing. This slide shows the corner of the proposed warehouse buildings, as well as the side elevation. The proposed loading dock and the gravel storage area are shown on this slide. Should this use permit be approved, the recommended conditions are intended to protect the surrounding single-family residences from any potential negative impacts of the uses by requiring additional landscaping along the residentially-zoned properties and the surrounding... and surrounding outdoor storage areas, requiring all operations to be wholly within a building, prohibiting any heavy manufacturing uses, and limiting operating hours on weekday evenings and weekends. Staff recommends denial of the use permit request for a warehouse and light manufacturing use development. The proposed uses are inconsistent with the city's commercial, long-range land use recommendations. The proposed development does not provide a suitable transition from the adjacent residential uses. However, staff does recognize that the 7.34-acre site has remained vacant for close to two decades. Further, staff understands that the proposed flex-based development may be occupied by uses with very few negative impacts and/or uses that are permitted by right in the GMU zoning district. A comment from the City of Suffolk Traffic Engineer was received regarding this application, indicating traffic concerns with the proposed use and the intent to accommodate heavy trucks. The comment explains that the roundabout located at University Boulevard and Prices Fork in Suffolk is not designed to accommodate heavy truck movements. Concerns were also expressed regarding the impacts of heavy commercial industrial vehicles accessing the proposed development on the surrounding residential uses. This concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for any questions from the commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Chopp. Commissioners? Any questions for Ms. Chopp? Commissioner Hines?
Good afternoon, Julie.
Hi.
So I just have a handful of questions here. You spoke about a master plan that was developed for this site. And you mentioned this for the northern Suffolk Portsmouth area. Was that, like, done in conjunction between the two cities of this master plan? Or was this only a master plan done by Portsmouth?
So the Hampton Roads Crossing development is partly in both cities. I would ask the applicant, I'm not sure how much conjunction there was at this time. I'm not exactly sure.
And the reason why I'm asking this is we did receive that email from the City of Suffolk detailing their concerns. Now, I'm not sure if Suffolk gives us that same consideration about what they do. Do they...
That's a good question.
Do they even care about Portsmouth's, you know, input in that regard? So I guess it's kind of a unique situation that they're weighing in on one of our developments. Now, they may have a good point, quite frankly, but is it, you know, is it... It seems a little unusual in that regard. So it'd be interesting to know that relationship. The second question, you said there are some by-right uses already. Could you just kind of detail examples of the by-right use? Could you just detail a couple of examples of that?
I can, yes. I just wanted to make a quick note on the previous question. So we... We sent, as a courtesy to the City of Suffolk, we sent a notice to them indicating that we had an application. So they may have done that when their side of Hampton Roads Crossing was developed. Or it could have been that those uses were permitted by right, and there was no notification of any adjacent property owners.
I just think it's mighty kind of you to do so.
Do what?
It's mighty kind of you to do so.
Okay. Okay. Yes. So here, let me grab my... Okay. So in the GMU zoning district, construction materials sales are permitted by right. Business support services, convenience store with gasoline sales is permitted by right. A garden center, gasoline sales, a laundromat. Retail sales is permitted by right. Vehicle sales is permitted by right. Vehicle parts supply retail is permitted by right. Minor vehicle repair and servicing is permitted by right. Boat and marine rental and sales is permitted by right. Recreational vehicle sales and service. Hotel.
Okay.
So there's a number of these.
I get a good... Yeah, I get a good feel on that, of what's there. So in actuality, if there was a concern about the neighbors in this kind of development, there really could be a convenience store that could pop up in that spot, and they'd have every right to do so.
Correct.
Or the Vance Auto Parts, if they wanted to set up a retail spot right there, right next to that neighborhood, they could do so under their current zoning.
Correct. They would have to... Any use that is developed would have to comply with the proffered conditions.
Of course. But still, they, you know, if you're worried about, quote, "the integrity of the neighborhood", they... Any of these things, they could actually build a hotel, you said, right there.
Correct.
So, okay. And then the last question right now is the definition of heavy vehicles. Who's setting that definition? Since there was a concern from the City of Suffolk, is that a VDOT set standard of that? And the reason why I'm asking is if it's, you know, tractor-trailers, that's one set of what could be considered heavy equipment. But if they're going to use potentially small vans or much smaller deals, could we not maybe set a condition that would address that? So that would still meet the applicant's need and take care of our friendly neighbors to the west's concern?
I believe we could potentially add some condition regarding the types of trucks that would be utilized. I believe that the applicant has some additional insight regarding the comments that were received from Suffolk.
Yeah, I'll ask them then.
Okay.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? None? Thank you, Ms. Chopp.
Thank you.
Ms. Murvine? I believe you have the Z-23-03 West Craddock.
Awesome. Good afternoon, planning commissioners. I am Amy Murvine, Senior Planner with the City of Portsmouth. This rezoning application request before you today is to rezone from conditional multifamily URM-K to the urban residential UR zoning district in order to remove the conditional zoning and develop the approximately 0.63 acres located at 2020 Greenwood Drive. The property is currently occupied by a single-family dwelling constructed in 1931. The surrounding area consists of residential and commercial type uses. To the north of the subject property is Ansel Garden Apartments, zoned multifamily urban residential URM. To the west is an unimproved right-of-way, followed by detached, single-family residences, zoned urban residential UR. To the east is a detached, single-family residence, zoned URM, followed by the Afton Shopping Center, zoned general mixed-use GMU. To the south is Greenwood Drive, followed by detached, single-family residential, zoned UR, and a commercial building space, zoned GMU. The applicant proposes to demolish the current structure, subdivide the property, and construct... The applicant proposes to demolish the current structure, subdivide the property, and construct two detached single-family dwellings. A single-family dwelling is permitted by right in the urban residential UR zoning district. The applicant's narrative also indicates the proposal for a two-family dwelling. Two-family dwellings require use permit in the UR zoning district. The current zoning of the subject property is conditional multifamily URMK. Conditional zonings are designated with a K and means there are voluntary proffered conditions of a rezoning by the applicant. On June 27, 1989, Portsmouth City Council adopted zoning amendment ordinance Z dash eighty-nine dash nine with three proffered conditions. One, the proposed development will be constructed in accordance with the site plan approved and group housing permit, GHP dash eighty-nine dash three. Number two, a maximum of sixteen units will be constructed on the site. And number three, the property will revert back to R dash seventy-five zoning should group housing project GHP dash eighty-nine dash three not be constructed. Per staff's discussion with the city's attorney office, reverter clauses, as noted in number three of the conditions above, have been deemed to be null and void. However, numbers one and two are still valid conditions of the conditional zoning. The property is designated on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan for multifamily residential development. Approval of the rezoning would allow the conditional zoning restrictions to be removed and be designated to a less intensive use classification. This would provide new development at a lower density in a manner that is appropriate for the property and compatible with the surrounding area. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning request. To my knowledge, no public comments have been received regarding this application. I will now stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Murvine. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Hines?
Hello again. So in the staff report, we, it says that you're talking about single-family, but the, I think the exact words was, the developer raised the prospect of putting duplexes. Is, which direction are we ultimately going, single-family or duplexes here?
So in the narrative that was submitted by the applicant, she wants to go forward with the subdividing the property and building two detached single-family dwellings. It was more if not going from the URMK to URM. She wants to go to the lower classification of UR, which so in URM duplexes are permitted by right, whereas in the UR duplexes have to go through the use permit process. So ultimately, I just wanted to make sure it was clear that based off of her project narrative that she wants to go with the detached single-family dwellings.
So they are single-family, not not duplexes?
Yes, correct.
Okay. It is mentioned in your staff report, I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? All right. Okay, thank you, Ms. Murvine.
Thank you.
Ms. Adamois, is there anything additional?
We are preparing an annual report. We hope to have that to you next month. At your next meeting, we're going to have the consultants working on the Innovation District come in and talk to you. So we asked that you come in maybe at twelve, see, they want to work with you, talk about land use and branding and things like that. We also are looking at updating the, well, reviewing the comprehensive plan. The code says we have to review the comprehensive plan every five years to determine if it should be amended, so we're working on that. So that's generally, you know, what's going on in the department.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, is there anything additional?
I do have a question about next, you were saying the Innovation District, you're going to bring in the bridge presenters. What does the rest of our potential schedule look like next, that following month? And the reason why I think this is a fairly heavy lift for our city, and I think, you know, I'd like to devote some time there if we can.
You want to know about the next two meeting dates?
No, I just want to know what the next, the next meeting, are we expecting to have two or three more cases on top of, or is this going to be just devoted just to the Innovation District, I guess?
No, the next meeting, you will have about three or four cases.
Okay. If if it's consensus, I think we maybe want to either have a separate time or an earlier start if possible, because I do think there's a lot there to unpack with the Innovation District. I've seen a number of those presentations, and I'd like to probably have a better understanding of what their total plan is, if that's agreeable to everybody.
Do you want to come in at eleven?
Again, I'm just seeking thoughts from
My concern is there are several commissioners that have a job.
Yeah, my saw
And, yeah, well, I mean that respectfully, but it may not be that easy for them to leave. So is it okay if we discuss it after we finish with the work session?
Absolutely. I just, I just want to throw it out there as a potential item there.
Okay. And get a consensus?
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
And you're gonna, Meg just reminded me, you're gonna have a practice session, roll call.
Next. Yes, ma'am. Meg, were you gonna run us through the practice session? Do you want to close the work session?
No.
Okay. All we're doing is acting as if we had an item that we were going to be voting on, and I will just do something, read part of one of the agenda items, and then we just want the commissioners, just as if we were actually making a vote. We just want to kind of practice it before we go into the public hearing. Okay? So I
Hold on one sec, Regina.
Yes.
Just want to make it clear that you're going to still make your motion and your second verbally, okay? That's still going to be verbal. We'd like for you to kind of do that slowly because Valerie's got to notate it on the screen, on the computer. What, so your motion needs to be for approval or denial, so make sure you're clear. I make a motion for approval or denial, whatever, because she's got a, there's an extra box, she's got to click on that so that it'll come up on the screen, and then someone else will second it, she'll put that, and then Regina will call for the vote.
If if I might add, if the commissioners, and I did mention this to them earlier, if Commissioner Hines is making the motion, can he identify himself, Commissioner Hines? Because Valerie is not familiar with the commissioners. And then make your motion. Is that good?
So to make our, to make our motion, would we just RTS and then be acknowledged by the
Ready to speak is the blue button.
Right, would we, for us to make the motion, would you want to press the blue button, be recognized by the chair, then make our motion?
That is correct.
Okay.
Ms. J, Commissioner Jiggetts, I thought you were raising your hand.
Okay.
Let's get into mode.
Okay.
So
Go ahead, you're gonna call one?
Yeah, we've, we've already did the case, so now the chair would say we need a motion and a second to approve UP dash twenty-two oh six.
Commissioners, we need a motion to approve Z dash twenty-three two oh six.
This is Commissioner Page, I make a motion to approve with conditions.
Good job.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Commissioner Coleman asks second.
Thank you.
And if it'll just pause for a sec, so you can see up on the screen there, it'll say who the motion was done by and what the motion was, and then who seconded, just so that, you know, that that will be actually on the record. The the green there will actually have the text of what the item is, and then, you know, you'll see your, the vote will come up above your names once you push your buttons.
Okeydoke.
We have a motion and a second to approve UP dash twenty-two oh seven, and you will be voting electronically.
Yes.
Someone, Jiggetts has not. This, you did it right.
Say that again? Oh.
Uh-huh, it's correct. I have a screen here so I can see what all of y'all, and the chairman can also see it as well, so I don't have to turn around to vote.
And then you can see who voted no, turns up in red, voted yes.
Or if someone abstained.
And then, and if somebody is, yeah, if you abstained, it'll be yellow, and if you're not here, then it stays white.
White.
So that that will be recorded that way. And then, once that's all done, we'll pause a second, and Valerie will clear the screen, and we'll go on to the next items. Yep.
We also have one feature here where the, and I'll put the timer.
Oh, that's nice.
I like that. Okay, so we're getting into the 21st century.
Okay.
Right? Thank you.
Is the RTS button required for this particular meeting?
We would like so, so that the chairman can see who, because on my screen it's showing the order of whoever hits it, so that way it times, you know, and then I can cut it off once you've spoken. Okay?
Okay.
Does that make sense? Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
You did great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you all.
Is there anything else? Commissioners, any other questions? That concludes our work session. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, May the 2nd, 2023, in the City of Portsmouth City Council Chambers. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, we will now confirm, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Five members of the Planning Commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the April 4th, 2023 public hearing. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Page, I make a motion for the approval of the minutes.
Commissioners, we have a motion, is there a second? Commissioner Hines?
Madam Chair, Anthony Hines, second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the April the 4th, 2023 public hearing, and you will be now voting electronically. Yes. One second.
Excuse me. The board is saying second by Curry. The second was Hines.
Okay.
It's okay.
Take our time.
No rush. Commissioner Page. And the second, Commissioner Hines.
Okay, we're good?
Okay.
Still missing something, Ms. Dexter.
I had my green light on.
The minutes are approved by votes five to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences, please note our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, June the 6th, 2023, at 12:30 PM, City Council Chamber, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their June the 13th, 2023 public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. Our first public hearing item, UP dash twenty-three dash zero-seven, Commercial District Three. Ron Holloway with New Home Builders requests a use permit to construct four townhouses on the approximately 0.231 combined acres located at 3002 and 3006 Deep Creek Boulevard in the general mixed-use GMU zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates these properties for the multifamily residential. The properties are owned by New Home Builders and is further described as Tax Map 145, Parcel 19 and 20. The staff coordinator is Amy Murvine, and will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
What do I do next? I don't know, first time doing this.
Your name, sir, and your address.
Yeah, I'm Ron Holloway from New Home Builders, and I'm requesting a use permit at 30, 3002 and 3006 Deep Creek Boulevard, and what I'm really requesting is just, is already zoned for multifamily use. Only thing I'm requesting is to be able to put driveways in each property. That's, that's what I'm requesting. Is there anything else that I need to specifically do?
No, sir. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Holloway?
I don't have a question for Mr. Holloway. Thank you for wanting to do this project, but I do want it read into the minutes about my concerns that we are not having the schools board or the school administrators to always respond to our planning department, where we know we're going to be having residential housing or multifamily housings or apartments. We need to have our school administration responding, because this always directly impacts the school enrollment. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions for Mr. Holloway?
Yes, Mr. Holloway. So first, let me get some clarity. Is it the plan for you to construct these townhomes that are right here, right, correct?
Yes, sir.
My only question is, is that in the backside of the house, it's exposed to the railroad tracks.
Yes.
Is it possible for you to put some sort of shrubbery or boundaries in place, because it's potential that children might live here, maybe?
Yes, sir.
Some sort of shrubbery or boundaries, if we can add that into the condition, to create some sort of border, because with all of the recent accidents or incidents that we've had with trains, and then we don't want one of the children to potentially, you know, run out over to the train, even though there is a paper walkway there, would you be opposed to putting some sort of bushing or something to kind of square off the house?
Not at all, we're going to fence it.
Oh, there it is.
There you go.
Okay. Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Mr. Holloway, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So the trash cans under condition number seven cannot be stored out front. Are you going to create a scenario where they could bring them in through the back, or they're going to be expected to put them in their garage, or?
It'd be sidewalking, so they could put them either in the, in the garage and just bring them straight out the driveway, or put them in the backyard.
Okay, because you said they were going to fence it, so they'll have a gate
Yes, ma'am.
in the rear?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's possible, yes, ma'am, on both sides.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Commissioners, any additional? Ms. Jiggetts?
Well, I just would like to say for clarity's sake, I would hope the trash cans would be in the back and not in the garages because of the obvious reasons.
Health.
Rodents love to
Yes.
explore and seek out, so that would just be my comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Commissioners, any additional questions? No, all right. Thank you, Mr. Holloway.
Thank you. Thanks for listening, guys.
Absolutely. Commissioners, if there's no additional questions, we are in need, what?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP dash twenty-three dash zero-seven. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed. this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, if there's no additional questions, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, this is Commissioner Page, for approval of UP-23-07 with conditions.
Commissioners, is there a second?
Conditions to include, uh, the shrubbery or fence, uh, that was agreed upon.
Okay. Commissioner Heinz.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second.
We have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of five to, uh, vote of five to zero with conditions, the shrubbery and the fence. Our next
Uh, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I believe the applicant was clear that there would be fencing, so I see no need to include shrubbery in the conditions.
Commissioner Jigots, I believe the shrubbery, Mr. Page was including that in that paper street behind the parcels, correct?
No, the shrubbery had to do with the back of each townhome.
Okay.
But the, uh, owner made it clear that it was going to be fenced. So we have no need to put in a condition about shrubbery when the applicant has already said it would be fencing.
Commissioner Heinz, being none.
So let me, let me, let me get clarity. When he established that he was putting up a fence
Okay.
that was a part of, that was the condition. That was understood. He stated that he was putting up a fence. Shrubbery, uh, let me restate, a fence and/or shrubbery, does that work? But he already stated that he was going to put up a fence. So do we, do we need to restate this motion?
Yep, Madam Chairman, if I may. I had understood the original motion to be shrubbery or fencing, which has been adopted. If we were to change that, we would have to undertake some motions practice, but I believe that shrubbery or fencing works for everybody.
Okay.
Shrubbery or fence.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good.
So we're good?
We're good.
Our next item?
Excuse me.
Yes.
I still want to weigh back in. In the business arena, we have something called a divided release, and I did not want to see a divided release on this motion because the applicant firmly stated there was going to be fencing. So if you could just give me clarity on that, and I don't understand why it can't be done without having to go through another motion behind it. It's just a matter of the applicant was clear. He said it would be fencing. So if he said it was be fencing, he didn't say anything about shrubbery, he said fencing. Then I don't see why we're putting shrubbery in there as an option.
Well, I think it benefits the applicant, if anything. I mean, certainly if he, if he wants to simply use fencing, he can do that, just as he represented. If for some reason during site planning, he should decide that he'd prefer to use shrubbery, that's an option with the, uh, condition as stated in the motion. Uh, but since we have already voted on it, that, that is, as stands right now, that is the condition, shrubbery or fencing.
You're good?
My fellow commissioner asked me, was I good? I'm good, it's just that to me, once the applicant firmly states what they're going to do, I don't see why we give a divided release on the motion. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Sure.
Thank you.
Our next item? UP-23-08 Hampton Roads Crossing. Larry S. Berry, P.E. of AES Consulting Engineers, requests a use permit for a warehouse and light manufacturing use in order to develop five warehouse and light manufacturing use in order to develop five holding, five buildings totaling 61,200 square feet on approximately 7.34 acres of land located at 1050 University Boulevard in the conditional general mixed-use GMUK zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as commercial. The property is owned by Terry Peterson Residential Company and is further described as Tax Map 833, Parcel 1.7. Staff Coordinator Julie Chop, the applicant is already at the podium. You state your name and your address for the record, sir.
Good afternoon. Thanks for being here today. My name is Larry Berry. I'm a professional engineer. I'm employed by AES Consulting Engineers. I'm a senior principal. I live at 2100 Georgetown Boulevard in Chesapeake, Virginia, at zip code 23325. And I guess it's easier to stand up here, it's easier to talk. Since we were here, I have with me Tuck Bowie, who is the president of Terry Peterson Development. And since we attended the, uh, I'll call it the informal session or the early session, I noticed there was a few comments that were made that I'll, I'll try to address as part of my statement and not spend a lot of time going back over the plan and what we're proposing to do, since I think the staff did a very good job of presenting that. I first started actually working on this land in, in the mid-1980s with another developer that had it under contract to build shopping centers and a lot of retail. And of course, the marketplace slipped out after that, and the property kind of set vacant, looking to be developed, until around the middle of 2005, when Terry Peterson contracted to do the property. And as part of the initial emphasis of doing that was to build the Old Dominion V-Mass Center, a building for Old Dominion and the, what's referred to now as the Doctor's Office Building. The Old Dominion Building, the Doctor's Office Building was in the city of Portsmouth. And then the land left over was planned at that point in time for another 75,000 to 100,000 square foot office tower. Uh, I think 305 parking spaces were mentioned earlier. The master plan, the planning of the site was actually done jointly in both cities simultaneously with an overall plan. The, uh, both cities were cooperative. We had hearings in, in both locations during it. Because it was a very fast-track project for the V-Mass Building, we actually had a committee of city staff from Suffolk and Portsmouth that met regularly to review the design plans that, uh, my firm prepared. I've been, like I said, I've been involved since the initial stages, and I guess I'm, based on my age, I'm probably the history man for this project. So that, so it was, it was all done at once. And it's, it's basically 100% developed, saving except for this seven-acre site, which, over the last 20, almost 20 years, we've had several opportunities and people to look at it. But because the way it's tucked in at the behind the other two office buildings, it's not really a prime commercial site for the retail, because you can see that there's a tremendous amount of retail out there now. It's not a hotel site. They tried to get a hotel, people interested in it. And if you haven't seen anything at all since the pandemic, there is no office market right now for suburban office buildings, which was originally planned. Uh, about two years ago, uh, a broker came to Terry Peterson's offices and talked to them about a development that's been built in Chesapeake. Uh, it was, uh, it was actually planned and was getting ready to go into construction for what I, I use the term a flex space, which is not a pure warehouse. It's not a pure manufacturing plant. It's a combination of a smaller office and then an area where whatever the company's doing, they can use and do inside. What was unusual about this particular development, it had been set up such that, you know, because of the smaller building, 10,000, 12,000 square foot footprints, they could, we can actually get delivery trucks, panel-type trucks that you see, UPS, et cetera, et cetera, type of trucks, up to make deliveries. But at the same time, we could provide a common loading dock if you had vehicles that needed a four-foot dock height. That's not to say that we expected to have a tremendous amount of tractor-trailer traffic, but there are companies that'll get, you know, one or two, maybe deliveries in that size truck a month. But they need, they, they walk away from any kind of product that doesn't have a four-foot dock, because they need to have a four-foot dock for certain deliveries. So that was part of what drove us to have a dock, loading dock. Not, we're not, we're not an Amazon warehouse. We're, we're lining them up, you know, 10 or 20 at a time, and then they're going back and forth. It's gonna be a minute amount of that type of traffic. We would expect a lot of fleet vans. Uh, the particular project that's been built and fairly occupied now in Chesapeake, which is where the images that I used to present how the architecture would look. Uh, I think one of the, one of the units is about 20,000 feet. It's been taken by the company that goes out and restores homes and businesses when they have accidents, flooding or fires or things of that nature. Another unit has been taken by a mobile vet that drives around to do veterinarian services to people at their homes. So it's, it's pretty, it's pretty interesting in what these things have to become. And, and, and it's something that, that Portsmouth doesn't have, and they, and they surely do not have it in this region of the city. If you look at your comp plan that was developed in 2018, most of the areas that were designated for these types of uses were over near the northern part of the city, near the waterfront, or down along High Street, coming, coming in this direction. It's, this region of the city is completely devoid of the, I'll call it industrial, even though it's, it's more office flex, but let's use the term industrial, because that's what you call it in your comp plan as compared to commercial. Mr. Peterson met with, um, the Economic Development Director and talked to him about this project, and he felt that it was something that Portsmouth could really need, would really use and need, and it was something that we can market and probably fill up and create jobs quickly. We then, he then held, I think back in September, the first meeting with the planning department to talk about the project. Everybody was excited about the project, but we also knew that to, just to clarify things, when we go to get, we go to market the buildings and start lining up tenants, we didn't want to get into a situation where, because it's zone commercial and you have a lot of uses, as you've talked earlier about what we can do under our current zoning, if we get anybody that comes in that might lean a little bit more to more warehousing, or they have minor assembly where they're getting various parts or pieces in and they assemble it, that might be considered the light manufacturing. We felt that was, that was recommended by the planning staff that we apply for a use permit for both warehousing as well as, uh, light manufacturing, which is why we're here today. Uh, after that meeting, then we developed the site concept, made some revisions, had several other meetings with planning staff, extremely cooperative, uh, very responsive to us and, and explaining things that we needed to be done, and that kind of brought us here today. Uh, which, and so we're here to ask about, ask for, ask for your approval so we can move forward to design and construction and, and get this project on the market for Suffolk. You might want to call up your economic development director and just see if he agrees with me about what this use would be and how it would benefit the city. The, uh, you know, the whole development has, uh, you know, 1,000 residential units in it along with the commercial that you've seen. All of those commercial users have, have WB67 trucks that come into the site to make deliveries daily, and probably there's a half a dozen or more that come in just to stock the stores. I would suspect that the few that we would have would not be a large increase in the, in the amount that you're seeing today on the roadways. Since I designed the roadways back and it, and worked with the city of Suffolk on the roundabout, I can tell you that the roundabout was designed at that time for the trucks to maneuver around it in a proper fashion. We would have, we would have had, and we laid out the parking lots for the office buildings such that we could bring WB67s and deliver materials. And we also laid it out for the apartment projects, because a lot of the trucks that break, moving trucks that might bring somebody cross-country are also WB67s. That larger truck came into play in the mid-2000s and became the standard one that we have to use for modeling, we were doing in our modeling for trucks. The, uh, after, in addition to meeting with the, with the city, we did also reach out to the Churchland Civic League, which is, is interesting that they're a fairly good distance away from where this property is, since we're all the way out on the western edge of Portsmouth. But the Churchland Civic League is a civic league that represents the landowners around us. I know notifications were sent to the adjacent property owners. Uh, we received no comments from them, and when, when we presented to the Civic League, they had about 20 members there that evening, they strongly endorsed this development for the city in Portsmouth. I asked it, when, to the audience if anybody lived nearby, and no one, no one was a close by resident, so I can't say that they were there for that presentation, but I know they've been notified by the staff. I think with that, I, I, that's probably all I really, I think I need to add it to, and we're ready to take questions if any of you members will have them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant?
Uh, I have a question, but it's really for planning staff. I think I understood that you were not in favor of the project? You recommended denial, is that correct?
Yes, that's true.
Please explain why again.
Okay. One, on the north and east boundaries, their residential development, it can't, that, that's not a positive thing. The Comprehensive Plan recommends more or less commercial, low-impact commercial development. Historically, the, the area was residential. Over time, it was constantly rezoned to higher and higher intensity land uses, but it always did a conditional on it to ensure that there was a negative impact to the residential development. So based on the Comprehensive Plan and the fact that it butts residential development, we haven't seen any major changes in that area that would dictate a need for this. I think flex development is, is a good use perhaps at another place. So we were concerned about possible impacts to the residential development, and because the Comprehensive Plan did not support that type of development.
Thank you. Uh, I will be going on record as supporting this, uh, application, and I will tell you what swayed me. When the planner, the senior planner was speaking on the types of businesses that are allowed in the area, one that stood out to me had to do with, um, automobile dealerships and gas stations, and both of those use heavy type of trucking to either bring in their vehicles or bring in gasoline. So I will be going on record as supporting this project. Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Commissioner Heinz.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, actually, I just have a handful of questions, I guess.
Okay.
So we did receive the email from the city of Suffolk, and thank you for answering the question. It just seemed kind of irregular that we would reach out without some sort of agreements there or master planning, you know, that kind of went hand in hand. So, uh, so thank you for putting that piece of the puzzle to me, together for me. Um, have you guys met with the city of Suffolk at all? Did, did they address any of these concerns with you?
No, we did not have any meetings with the city of Suffolk on this. To them, um, you know, when I look, when I look at the property, we, you know, we did the TIA and looked at the traffic volumes that were projected for all the streets and the roadways in the neighborhood. Now, I'm gonna back up a little bit on this, this might get a little lengthy, but when we originally started the project in 2005, they had a, a master plan that had hotels, office buildings, and commercial properties, and 600 residential units. They started building the residential units, and it's, and it's a putt type of thing where things can be moved around. Nothing was fixed on a particular parcel. When they began building the 600 residential units, they marketed the commercial property, and other than getting a couple little out parcels, I think, you know, a gas station on the corner with a Burger King and things of that nature, they couldn't generate any real interest in the bigger. And they looked at the markets, and they were pretty well told by the national retailers that you need more rooftops nearby. So we went to Suffolk and had several meetings with them to talk about that and asked if, about coming back and increasing the residential unit count from 600 to 1,000, which the city of Suffolk agreed with, we filed, and it was approved. And I don't know that Portsmouth was involved in any of that, but as a result of changing the number of residential units, we had to restudy the sanitary sewer systems, the drainage, the water systems for fire flows, and the traffic impact study was updated in 2011. When that traffic study was updated, we didn't eliminate the hotels and the office where square footage that was called for. We added 400 more cars, 400 more residential units to the network in the computer system, which increased the traffic levels. Now, here we are in 2023. This particular site was, was generate, was set up, the handle, still had a residual in Portsmouth for 70,000 square feet of office, which would have generated about 750 vehicle trips per day. What we're proposing to go in here is only 60,000 square feet of flex space, but because it has such a lower traffic demand, it's only gonna generate about 350 vehicles per day. So you're, a net of about 400 less vehicles on the roads throughout Hampton Roads Crossing and entering the streets in the City of Suffolk. But because by the time we finished building all of the residential units, the land, there was a large land mass where we had planned 400 hotel rooms and another couple hundred thousand square feet of office, and all in Suffolk, that never got built, and there is no place to build it. So the real net difference today, if we don't build an office building on this piece or something that's a high-traffic generator, and we build what we're doing, is almost 500, 5,000 vehicles per day less in total traffic that you'll see on the roads inside our community or going out onto the streets surrounding it. So at that point, I, you know, we didn't, the numbers basically said that, I didn't even know why we needed to do a TIA, but the city asked for it and we submitted it. We got a couple of comments from Portsmouth's traffic engineers, and they have approved the TIA that we've done, and they made no comment about the, the volume of tractor-trailers. And we can go, we can go back into the numbers. It's all part of a national, national books that we use from the federal government. And for every kind of use, they'll break down what might be a passenger car vehicle versus a truck vehicle. But that truck percentage is very, large tractor-trailer percentage is very low for this kind of use. I don't know if that addresses.
And I don't think they're, they're questioning the intensity of traffic, because obviously the number of cars and vehicles will be, will be down with this type of development, one or the other. I think their concern naturally is the suitability of the, the road system that would carry you from, from the roundabout through someone's, through the parking lot to the, to the next thing. So I, I think that was like probably their main concern.
And, and here's my answer to that point. The roundabout was designed for the truck, tractor-trailers to come into this site and service the buildings you already see there, the university buildings and the other office buildings in the site. We've looked at that and that's, and modeled that, the two access points. They managed, they work with WB67 trucks. And there's already a large number of these vehicles coming in to service the commercial center that's only a few hundred feet past the roundabout. So there's already commercial vehicles of that size, tractor-trailers, WB67s, coming in on a daily basis to the roadway. And we're not adding, we will, we will not be adding additional trucks every single day to the traffic that's already there.
So I, I guess the, so I, I think you've answered that question of, so I'm gonna lay that one aside for a minute if I can. I'm assuming you're planning on building all five of these spaces at once?
Yes, sir.
And then marketing those five spaces and they can, you know, build them to suit or however they.
They'll be leased. The ones I used in my graphics were condo. Those are actually sold. These will be leased and be in the ownership of Terry Peterson.
Okay. But all five will come online all at once?
Finish it out. Yes, sir.
So I guess I'm gonna pick this back up again and play it over here. Since we've kind of opened the Pandora's Box of letting Suffolk in on, and letting them have their, their say in this, is there any objections to maybe postponing this for 30 days and leaving the public hearing open, maybe to allow you to maybe get their blessing, since we are kind of?
We've actually reached, since we received that kind of late in the game, we have reached out today to the City of Suffolk to talk to their Public Works Director, who formerly was a traffic engineer for the City of Suffolk when this development was developed, and did his input on it. I believe, I believe that he will look at what they said as being a little bit stronger for the.
Mr. Barry.
I'm sorry.
Pardon. No, we need you to speak into your mic, please. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That we've reached out to Robert Lewis, who's the Public Works Director in the City of Suffolk. At the time, this, for 25 years or so, he was the City of Suffolk's traffic engineer. We couldn't reach him. He was in a meeting, so we haven't had a chance to talk to him directly. But we're the, under the impression that when he reviews what, what came out of the staff, that we will get a reconsideration when he understands what we're really building. You know, I, I'm afraid that they just said, oh, this, they're gonna be building warehousing back there, and, and everybody thinks of, Suffolk has had so many problems lately with warehousing out on Route 758, that if you mention warehouse, the, you know, they go into shock. And so I think that was a little bit of an overreaction and, but our client would prefer not to defer. And hopefully, and hopefully we'll have that resolved by the time we get to City Council.
I, I understand that you're, in your world, time is money. I also understand the world that we have to be good neighbors with our cities. When we invite them into a conversation, it's not great business practice to slam the door in their face. I, I actually support this as well on first blush, unless, you know, we have a group of citizens that tell me otherwise, I think. But I'm not sure I can support it without now having some sort of blessing from, from them now that we've invited them in this conversation. Thank you.
Commissioners, Commissioner Jigetz, did you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question for our city attorney. Because we have to be in full disclosure as we sit at this podium. I just personally want to know if it is a conflict of interest if one of our commissioners is actually employed by the City of Suffolk. I just need clarity.
No, no, there's no conflict of interest under state law there.
Why is that?
Under the State Conflict of Interest Act, it's not something in which there's a personal interest or a contractual interest on behalf of the individual.
You stating that if a commissioner works for a city that has gone on record as opposing this particular applicant, you don't see that as a conflict of interest. I want to be very clear on that.
Yes, ma'am. No, no, I do not, not under state law.
Thank you.
Commissioner Heinz?
In the interest of full transparency, which I believe 100% in, Ms. Jigetz is speaking of myself. I do work for the City of Suffolk Public School System, which actually is a completely separate entity under state law. I do not have any reporting measures to the city manager, planning departments, community development, or any of the others that were mentioned in this email. What I sit on this dais, it is to serve the citizens of Portsmouth exclusively. But thank you for bringing that concern, Ms. Jigetz, and I felt like it would be important to be transparent with everybody watching. Thank you.
Thank you for your full disclosure, Commissioner Heinz. I appreciate it. We've served on different boards before, and I know that's the, the type of person you are. But as I've already said, I certainly would be supporting this project if we can bring it to a vote.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Barry. Are there any additional questions? Madam, Commissioner Page?
This is not a question, and I'm, I'm still kind of on the fence about this one because I'm concerned that a portion of, a great portion of the, the land enforcement is becoming an industrial site. And I think that we have an opportunity here to possibly make a decision that will not turn our city into an entire gray, you know. This is a site that's green, that is by homes, it's a buffer between commercial, and I, I don't know if I'm ready for the entire city to be industrial, you know. And that's pretty much what it looks like. And so I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say I'm, I'm not for this because there is a great amount, I can look out of that window now and see more gray than grain. That's a problem for me. And so I just wanted to put that on record.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing item on UP-23-08. Madam Chairman and Commissioners, Tuck Bowie, who is the owner of the property is here, if you have any questions for him?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is, for the record, my name is Tuck Bowie. I'm the president of Terry Peterson Residential Companies. It wasn't my intent to talk today, but I think there's been some issues that have been raised that I would certainly like to address. First of all, Mr. Heinz, to your question about the, the City of Suffolk raising a question, I was really taken back by the fact that we didn't get this input from them until yesterday. I, same time you did, and I'm sure there's some reasons for that. I, I'm the one that reached out, first of all, to the planning director this morning, Kevin Weins, and then he suggested I not reach out to Jason Souders, who, traffic engineer, who wrote it, but to his boss, to talk to him about it. And I reached out to him and unfortunately was able, unable to, to get him today. But what I want to make clear is, I'm not sure why Suffolk even has the right to ask the question. These streets that we're talking about, University Boulevard, where traffic would come in, assuming they're trucks, and again, I don't think they're gonna be any large trucks that, like Suffolk is making it sound, but comes in off of College Drive, one to University Boulevard, these are all publicly dedicated streets that are now maintained by the city or by VDOT. Suffolk doesn't maintain their streets. They turn theirs, they get money from, from VDOT, and VDOT maintains the streets. So I don't see where Suffolk has the right to question what kind of a vehicle comes in on those roads. As Mr. Barry pointed out earlier, he was the engineer of record from the very beginning. These streets were designed both from a structural perspective and a horizontal perspective to accommodate a truck like that. So for them to come in at the 11th hour and make the comments that they made, and, and insinuate that we're building this large industrial, heavy industrial and manufacturing situation, obviously they didn't take the time to read the application and, and understand. And quite honestly, you can tell my frustrations. We have invested a lot of money in this project. It's the first mixed-use development that's ever been done in both the City of Suffolk and the City of Portsmouth. As Mr. Barry indicated, we've, we've built 1,000 residential units, about 150,000 square feet of retail. There are 10 retail out parcels. We're finishing the last apartments that we're building that are age-targeted, and this is the last part of our development. Why would we do anything that would compromise or jeopardize our investment? It just doesn't make any sense. So I'm the one that told Mr. Barry, I don't want to defer this. I think it's unfair to use that as a reason to deferring us moving forward with this. Relative to your comment, Commissioner Page, while I understand what you're saying, if you look at the site plan, there's a tremendous amount of green space that we're gonna create with this. We spent time before we even got to this point, as Mr. Barry alluded, talking to your Director of Economic Development, and I would encourage you to please bring him up here and have him validate what Mr. Barry and I are saying. But we spent a lot of time having that discussion, then meeting with your staff to talk about these things, and then having a meeting with the Civic League. And we went out of our way to do that prior to this meeting so that we could vet that with them and have them tell us what their thoughts were. And to a person, they all said, we like what you're doing. Now, Mr. Heinz, or Commissioner Heinz, you had indicated, you had asked a question earlier about what uses could be done there. And there are a lot of obtrusive uses that by right could be done there, which we have no intent of doing. And I, I, the staff even suggested, or the comprehensive plan even suggested high-density residential. We'd be more than happy to build apartments back there. Do you think the residential neighborhood would, would appreciate that? I don't think so. Nor do I think that they want a, a bunch of five or six-story office buildings back there looking down into their windows. So for all those reasons, I think this, this is a good use. It makes a lot of sense. It's gonna generate tax revenue for the City of Portsmouth, and I would encourage you to support this today. But I'd also encourage you to bring your Economic Development Director up here also, because Mr. Barry and I have alluded to certain things. I'd like for him to validate that. Thank you for your time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Commissioners, Commissioner Heinz?
Thank, thank you for your comment. I'm probably the, the one that honestly supports, supported this from the day I, from the time I read it, honestly. But, but I do think that with this late information, I don't think there's really anything hurt by having more information from our partners and to where we can get solidified answers, because evidently master plan is together in the city, and we, we reached out for comment. And if we're not going to honor the comment, then why did we reach out to begin with? That's kind of where I'm sitting from. If what you're telling me is 100% truth, and honestly, the work that you guys have already done indicates that what you're telling me is the truth, there is no harm, in my opinion, of getting an answer to that to where we can feel comfortable there. Secondly, this is the second time they've requested Mr. Donahue to come to the podium. Is it appropriate for me to ask for Mr. Donahue to come to the podium and give his thought on that? Are we okay with that?
Mr. Bowie?
I was gonna say the same thing. Yes.
Yeah, when you're done, you know, asking questions, he can, you know, it's public hearing, so.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions for Mr. Bowie?
I have finished my call. Thank you.
Mr. Page, did you have one? Okay.
I just want to say I concur. If we can get Economic Development Director, Mr. Donahue, to take the podium, I think it would be very beneficial.
Thank you.
If he's willing to do so.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie.
You're quite welcome.
Mr. Donahue, you can come up.
Good afternoon. Brian Donahue, I'm the Director of Economic Development for the City of Portsmouth, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Planning Commission. Pleasure to be before you this afternoon for this application. As Mr. Barry and Mr. Peterson have indicated, you know, we've been working some time together, both as an Economic Development Office, our Planning Department, and the Development Group to, to get before you today. What I can speak to are questions regarding the marketability, feasibility of this project, and, and really why we're here today. There is a significant demand and need for this product in Portsmouth, and I would say not just Portsmouth, but really all of Hampton Roads. Our inventory in this type of product, flex space, is really limited. I would compare this project to what you can see very close to where we sit today in Port Center with our Commerce Park, as well as perhaps Airline Business Park and Airline Boulevard. So some of the comparable uses that you're seeing there is, is what they're proposing to have in this, this project. And that includes a lot of small businesses. When our office works with a development group to assess a site or projects potential in Portsmouth, what we're really looking at is highest and best use for the property. And when we determine that, our department is willing to support a project and, and bring it to our, our partner departments to begin that process of evaluating it to move forward. And we do feel like this is an appropriate use. We do feel like it's the highest and best use for the property. We have, I think, been planning the development of this site since the early 2000s. So we're 20 years. So, we're twenty years in, as Mr. Barry has indicated, and we have yet to see a project with the viability that this project is presenting to you all today. Commercial office space is something that has been a bit of a challenge in this location. In fact, the Mast One building that this will sit adjacent to still has a vacant, yet-to-be-built-out office suite on the top floor that has sat since the building has been completed. So, it's really not a viable market for commercial office space. I think we've addressed the issues with residential development here on this, this site. We're really looking at this as being a jobs and business driver. These types of units can support small businesses, contracting firms, you know, light, small-scale manufacturers, which we have in Portsmouth now, but quite frankly, we don't have enough of. So, we're talking about, you know, technology industries, autonomous vehicles, places where office space is needed in additional, in addition to warehouse space for the assemblage of these advanced pieces of equipment. We have lost leads and projects, prospective businesses looking at Portsmouth where we did not have space to accommodate them, locating here in Portsmouth. So, this will fill that void. We, you know, understand the Terry Peterson Company's track record, they are high performers, you know, they've been successful with what they've done in Hampton Roads Crossing. This is the last piece of the puzzle to finalize the build-out and complete, you know, the Portsmouth portion of their project. So, as a department, I can speak, you know, to the viability of this proposed application and what they're looking to do. We have the utmost confidence that upon its completion, we can lease this space out, working with them, very, very rapidly. There is not product like this in the market as it stands currently. So, there, this will be in high demand for the region, it's got accessibility to serve not just Portsmouth, but really all of Hampton Roads and beyond because of the transportation network that it's located adjacent to. So, as a department, we do support this application and what's been proposed for you today. I'm happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Commissioner Hines?
No, Jigget's added up first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Director Donahue. Do we have any performers on, on this particular project at all, in terms of tax revenue for the City of Portsmouth?
In terms of what it will generate? In terms of revenues?
Yes, yes.
That's what you're asking?
Performer, revenue.
Commissioner Jiggetz, we do not have a specific performer. I think the, the details of the project in terms of the construction cost, which is always fluctuating these days, that's somewhat fluid until their plan is finalized. Of course, a lot of that depends on the decision that you make today and ultimately, City Council. But, you know, for a ten million dollar project, not saying that that's what this will cost, and perhaps the developer can speak to that, but that would represent about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars annually in real estate tax revenue to the city. So, just to give you kind of an example of, of what, you know, that could generate here, if, if that's what we're looking at in terms of a value, that's what would be realized just in the real estate tax revenue. You also would need to give consideration to, you know, personal property tax, machinery and tools, and of course, we always look at job creation as well.
Thank you so much for that response. And, and this isn't for you per se, Mr. Donahue, but I think it's good when our Planning Department and their transmittal, they include other cities. I don't have a problem with that. There's nothing wrong with that. That's a good thing. But just because a city, another city gives input that may represent a different perspective or a negative point of view does not mean that that has to drive our decision on this Planning Commission. It is our job and our responsibility to vote the way we feel we should vote, but just because another city says no does not mean that it's disrespectful for us to go against and say yay. We want different cities to have input. There's no problem with that. But at the end of the day, it is our responsibility to do the best for the City of Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hines?
Thank you, ma'am. This, this is for Attorney, Attorney Miller. So, just, just to make sure, back to Mrs. Jigget's concern of me potentially having a conflict, just make sure everybody's familiar with the state code about a city does appropriate to a school system and the Suffolk, City of Suffolk does ultimately pay my salary. You don't have any conflict at all. I just wanna make sure you understand, you don't read that as conflict. I just wanna make sure, you, I know you know the law about this, I just wanna make sure I'm very transparent about this.
Yes, no conflict, sir.
Okay. Second question would be, could we, could we approve and still allow the ball to roll pending a blessing from the City of Suffolk, and when it comes to the traffic piece of this, their concern?
I think you can, you can do that in the sense that it will proceed to council, and you can express the hope that perhaps some sort of condition agreeable to Suffolk could be reached and inserted prior to the council session. But there's no way, once you approve it, it's going to go to City Council, so you can't claw it back if your hopes are not realized, if that makes sense.
Could we have maybe a side note to our City Council to kind of look for this? Because I don't, I, I don't have enough to where I wanna hold it up, but I do think that it is disingenuous for us to ask for an opinion and then not accept or not even take it under advisement, when there could be some potential things to that. That's where my, my concern is. I mean, I don't want to hold up the project, because honestly, I, I think I'm probably more green light on this than red light. If this last bit of piece of information did come through, my, my thought was, unless I received tremendous pushback from the community, which is definitely not happening here, I was gonna support this. But again, I think it's disingenuous of us as a city to ask and then not at least accept and allow them to reach court, and then it's even further disingenuous to not allow the contractor or the potential developer to not be able to defend themselves back to that, to the accuser, I guess. So, I just wondered if, what is in our playbook of things that could potentially be deployed, I guess, in that regard?
Well, when, when staff prepares materials for council, they include what, what the Planning Commission did with a particular item. And so, it can certainly be included in that summary, that Planning Commission expressed a concern about the City of Suffolk's comments and requested that the applicant speak with the City of Suffolk in an effort to resolve them.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are they, any additional questions for Mr. Donahue?
None of Mr. Donahue. I do have a question of the applicant.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Would you be agreeable to working with the City of Suffolk to make sure that their questions are answered?
Absolutely. I, I, my intent was to come here today with an answer for you, because I knew you were gonna ask this question. I mean, you would, you would not be transparent if you didn't. I just, as I said, I, I was taken back, first of all, because of all the work that we've done in the City of Suffolk, for them to make a comment like that, and secondly, that they would respond at the eleventh hour as they did. As you suggested, had they not done that, we wouldn't be having this conversation about this point. So, we are absolutely, between now and City Council, gonna have a meeting with the City of Suffolk and get this issue rectified.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Glad you're willing to do that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Commissioners, any additional questions? Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP dash twenty-three dash zero-eight. If there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners and other neighbors. I'm Mark Gadulda Yutrowski, P.O. Box 50141, Portsmouth, Virginia 23703. I had not intended to speak on this, but there are some issues that came up here that were not in the packet, this message from the City of Suffolk being one of them. And I would like to add some perspective from where I sit. As a resident of Churchland, familiar with a lot of the history of the City of Portsmouth, including the annexation of nineteen sixty-three, which brought, eventually brought Churchland into the City of Portsmouth, and the repercussions of that annexation. This being, this divided sort of municipal authority being one of them, I consider that area in which this project is cited as being sort of the Bermuda Triangle of Hampton Roads, where we have entanglement with not only the City of Suffolk, in certain parts of this divided property with the City of Chesapeake as well. And, you know, my concern for Portsmouth as an urban core city that has been precluded, along with other urban core cities, from any annexations after the, the sixth decade of the last century, you know, being landlocked. Historically, Portsmouth has had as much as fifty percent of its land being tax-exempt, which is not a healthy fiscal condition to, to live with. So, I'm very enthusiastic about the prospect of doing some commercial development in an area that we have co-developed with the City of Suffolk, but up to this point, we've gotten all the public use, the non-taxable use there, and they've derived all the revenue. So, this is an opportunity for us to get a little back and, without doing any harm to residential use. Another of my interests is ensuring that people in, in neighborhoods are not negatively impacted by commercial development. So, this appears to be something that is kind of the Goldilocks project, in that it provides us the potential for revenue, and it does not serve as a detriment to any nearby residential uses. For those reasons, I want to encourage you to take favorable action on this project. The City of Suffolk, you know, I've not seen that memo, I'd be more comfortable if I had at this point, but it, it almost feels like a spoiler sort of position on their part. I don't know if there's bad blood about the fact that we own substantial water rights in their city, and this is like a turn of the knife. But as, as somebody who serves on a regional commission here, and attends the regional body meetings, and one of which I will be attending tomorrow, I'm big on regional cooperation. But I think Suffolk is being somewhat uncooperative here, and I respect the desire to hear from them and act in good faith when they raise an objection, but I'm not sure their objection is wholly based on good faith. So, I would not want it to deter favorable action on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yutrowski.
Ladies and gentlemen, again, this is a public hearing on item UP dash twenty-three dash zero-eight. If there is anyone else here who would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Excuse me, I had noted that I wanted to speak after Mr. Chuk. I'm not even gonna mess up your name, but no, you will. I don't know if you saw that I had my button up.
No, ma'am, it was not lit up.
It's not?
No.
Oh, I'm trying to use this one. Which one? This one? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Yutrowski?
Go ahead, come on. Okay. Oh, okay, thank you. Commissioner Hines? I just want to, in my opinion, just try to wrap a bow around it. I don't feel that City of Suffolk weighing in, as I say, I don't see that as a negative. I think it's a positive, because my background being in banking and economic development, we want to have input from our various cities. It does not mean that we're going to agree with them. We don't want that. We don't want to be surrounded by a bunch of yes on any, any type of initiative. We don't want to be surrounded with all cities saying yes. You don't want that. You get the best democratic input when you allow input. And I just wanted to be clear on that. We have allowed input, and that's okay. It's good. It's good to have input, but just because you have input does not mean you are bound to agree with the input and the way we vote. So, I just wanted to put that out there and go on record in the minutes of saying that. Thank you.
Commissioner Hines?
I was gonna allow the public hearing to close and...
Is there anyone else who would like to address this application? You may come forward, you have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none. Madam Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am going to make a motion that we approve UP dash twenty-three dash zero-eight with the conditions as outlined in the staff report, with an understanding and notation to council in an update format when they go to hear this, as to the findings of the developer.
I second from Commissioner Jiggetz.
Commissioner Hines, would you repeat that just a little bit for me, please?
Try from the beginning again. Commissioner Hines, making a motion to approve UP dash twenty-three dash zero-eight as presented with the conditions in the staff report, with a staff note to council as to the report back from the findings from the City of Suffolk.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, we have a first and a second. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This, this item is approved by vote of four to one, with conditions. Our next item, Z dash twenty-three dash zero-three, West Craddock. Shepherd Quality Homes, Inc., requests a rezoning zoning map amendment on approximately zero-point-six-three acres located at twenty-twenty Greenwood Drive from conditional multifamily URMK to urban... conditional multifamily URMK to urban residential UR zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for multifamily residential. The property is owned by Shepherd Quality Homes, Inc., and is further described as Tax Map 468, Parcel 5. Staff Coordinator is Amy Mervine. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Ma'am, can you step over to the microphone, please? Thank you.
I apologize for my entire, I was running late. So Shepherd Quality Homes, we build...
Your name?
Andrea Shepherd.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. We build new homes in the area, and we had purchased this lot with the intent of building two new homes and demolishing the existing home. We actually have several friends that live on this street, and we would be building two single-family homes, which we feel would be more beneficial because it is completely residential for the most part. I believe there, you know, it's right there behind Main Street, but there is another residential home. So it would be, you know, but we wouldn't be, you know, we'd be more than happy to do a multifamily if y'all would prefer, like, a townhouse. We'd be preferable with whatever y'all would want to do, but we would fully intend to build two single-family homes. We've already started demolishing it, actually. When we purchased it, the deed stated that it was two lots. So we were then under the impression that it was still two lots. But when we did a further deed search on it, it said that it would revert after the use permit expired. But then we found out that we had to have it rezoned to have that done. So that's what we're requesting, is that it be submitted back to the zoning of, was it urban residential? Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Oh, it's okay. You're fine. Don't be nervous.
We've built several homes. We've built in y'all's historic area, too, and we've worked with the Commission on that. And we didn't have any problems building within the scope of what y'all wanted and presenting all of that. So, I mean, we built within the historic Chesapeake, pretty much all the areas we've built with all the requirements.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Coleman?
Commissioner Coleman with a question. We'll find out if there's anyone here to speak during the public hearing. But do you know of anyone that may, of anyone that had any adverse comments, or have you gone through the neighborhood? I heard you just say that you had friends. Have you talked to neighbors?
My husband has spoken to several of them because he works on site, and they all seemed kind of happy about it being torn down and being rebuilt.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions, Commissioners? No? Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on Item Z-23-03. I have no registered speakers. If there's someone here who would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Martha Williamson. I live at 2100 Greenwood Drive. And I'm all for the two single-family homes. I'm not for a multifamily complex. I've just been there so long, and I'd rather see homes there, single-family homes, than the complex. That's all I have. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Comis-
This was for the applicant, and just to state again, your intention is to build single-family homes?
Yes, sir. You see from that allocation page, that's just an example of one of them.
Okay. Just want to make sure that that was clear.
Is there anyone else who would like to address this application? Appearing to be none. Madam Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any additional discussion?
Work this out.
It's all right. We're going to all get through this. Commissioner Page?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of Z-2303. This is Commissioner Page.
I second that. Heinz?
Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second.
Madam Chairman, I have a motion and a second to approve Z-23-03, and we will be voting electronically. This item is approved by vote of five to zero.
Madam Secretary, I believe that this concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Chairman.
Commissioners, are there any further questions or business? Ms. Adamois, any further business?
I just want to note that there are two public hearings coming up for the Innovation District Master Plan. May, the next one will be June 6 at Social Services at 2 to 4 and from 6 to 8.
I'm sorry, the one in May was when?
The one in May 16. And the topic on that one will be urban design and place-making. And the one for June 6 is just going to be next steps.
Okay. And the one for May 16, Social Services building as well?
Both of them, Social Services. They have two meetings, 2 to 4 and 6 to 8 on both dates. So if you can't come out in the middle of the day, you're working, and perhaps at night.
Thank you. If there's no further business, then this meeting is now adjourned.